Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City of Riverbank Regular, City Council, and Local Redevelopment Authority Meetings for Tuesday, April 26, 2016 at 6:00 PM. Please join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain seated. Reverend Neal?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father Jesus, we come to you tonight with praise and thanksgiving on our heart and in our minds. We thank you, Heavenly Father, for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We thank you, Heavenly Father Jesus, for the many things that you've given to each one of us. We know, Heavenly Father Jesus, that you look down upon this earth each and every day, and you look at us, and we hope, Heavenly Father Jesus, that we are standing up to the stature and the morals that you want us to be. We know, Heavenly Father, that you put leaders in office, and we know, Heavenly Father Jesus, that you give them the wisdom that it needs to exercise those things that's the betterment for the whole community, not just for individuals, but the whole community. We thank you, Heavenly Father Jesus, for each leader we have here, for each person, Heavenly Father Jesus, that's on this staff, that's in a leadership position. We thank you, Heavenly Father Jesus, for the staff that we've been given here in Riverbank. We ask, Heavenly Father Jesus, that you bless them, that you be with them, that you lead and guide them in everything they do. We know, Heavenly Father Jesus, today, today it seems like things are much worse than they were years ago, but we know, Heavenly Father Jesus, that you are in control, and we thank you, and we ask that you bless us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Roll call, please.
Council Authority Member LeAnn Jones-Cruz, here. Council Authority Member Cal Campbell.
Here.
Council Authority Member Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Janine Tucker.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien is on an excused absence.
Okay. Conflict of interest. Any council authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Seeing none, we will proceed with presentations. Item 1.1, proclamation declaring the month of May as Bike-to-Work Month. And I believe we have a member in our audience who is here to accept this proclamation, and that is Lisa Donahue. Please come forward to the podium, and I'll meet you down there.
Good evening. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Great. Welcome. We're so happy to see you.
Good. Thank you.
City of Riverbank Proclamation for National Bike Month, May 2016. Whereas bicycle riding has been celebrated as a utilitarian, economical, and environmentally sound mode of transportation since 1956, and whereas the month of May has been designated as National Bike Month by national, state, and local governments in order to promote greater public awareness of bicycle operation and safety education in an effort to reduce accidents, injuries, and fatalities, and whereas regular bicycling incorporates a healthy form of exercise into an individual's daily routine and serves to model healthy practices to children, and an increasing number of businesses have installed bicycle parking to support employees who commute by bicycle, and whereas the City of Riverbank encourages the increased use of the bicycle benefiting all citizens by improving air quality, reducing traffic congestion and noise, decreasing the use of and dependence upon finite energy sources, and fostering exercise, and whereas the education of cyclists and motorists as to the proper and safe operation of bicycles is important to ensure the safety and comfort of all users. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Riverbank does hereby recognize the month of May 2016 as National Bike Month, and the week of May 16 through 20, 2016, as Bike-to-Work Week, and be it further resolved that the Riverbank City Council urges all who support bicycling to participate in the events planned, and urges all road users to share the road safely with bicyclists. Signed this date by the entire City Council, April 26, 2016. Here you go. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Do you want to add a few words? Sure. I'll step up. I'll kind of, I'll rotate, so I get everybody. Thank you guys so much from Commute Connection and the Council of Governments. We want to thank you guys for issuing Bike-to-Work Month. I know we're taking over the whole month now. It's kind of exciting. So for anybody who wants to participate, we're giving away some awesome prizes. You guys can check it out at mycommuteconnection.com. We're partnering with a lot of local businesses to get some awesome events off the ground. So if anybody has any questions, I'll be here afterwards, but otherwise, thank you guys so much, and we really appreciate it.
You're very welcome, and thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have another proclamation for national, item 1.2, National Autism Awareness Month, April 2016, and for this, I'm going to ask Jeff White to come forward, and he's a special education teacher at Byer High School, and I'd also like our council member LeAnn Jones-Cruz to come down and join us. She's also a special education teacher at Byer, and largely responsible for our opinions and our awareness of this issue. Okay? So let me read this, and then we'll ask you both if you'd like to comment. Whereas autism is the fastest-growing developmental disability in the United States, affecting more than 3 million people, it is an urgent public health crisis that demands a national response, and whereas autism is the result of a neurological disorder that affects the normal functioning of the human brain and can affect anyone regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, or socioeconomic background, and whereas symptoms and characteristics of autism may present themselves in a variety of combinations and can result in significant lifelong impairment of an individual's ability to learn, develop healthy interactive behaviors, and understand verbal as well as nonverbal communication, and whereas as the effort to address autism continues, doctors, therapists, and educators can help persons with autism overcome or adjust to its challenges and provide early accurate diagnosis, as well as the resulting appropriate education intervention and therapy that are vital to future growth and development, and whereas it is also important to ensure that persons living with autism have access to the lifelong care and services needed to pursue the full measure of personal happiness and achieve their greatest potential, and whereas the City of Riverbank is honored to take part in the annual observance of Autism Awareness Month, in the hope that it will lead to a better understanding of the condition. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Riverbank does hereby proclaim April 2016 as Autism Awareness Month in the City of Riverbank, and encourages all city officials, employees, and residents to promote and support the Autism Awareness Month and to participate in any activities in and/or around the area in order to become better educated about autism and create a better community for individuals with autism. Signed this date by the entire City Council, April 26, 2016. There you go.
Please step forward and take the mic.
Sure. I'll say something. Thanks so much for the honor of receiving this. Thanks, LeAnn, for inviting me. Appreciate it. Just 15 years ago, I got my degree down at Stan Slough State, and there was autism class. It was just a little class that was added as an extra, so it's great to see 15 years later, or 16 years later, you know, a city giving up a month. It's a beautiful month, April, colorful, diverse month to the cause of autism and the awareness of autism. Thanks again.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
He said everything I wanted to say, so it's perfect. Thank you.
Thank you both very much.
Congratulations.
Item 2, Public Comments. No action can be taken. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, please state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the City Council LRA Board. Do we have anyone in the audience who would like to make comments?
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. My name is Reverend Charles Neal. I live at 2312 Reaverted Drive, Riverbank, California. As we all know, March, I mean, May 5, 2016, is National Day of Prayer. It's been set aside by the federal government. It's been honored for many years. This year, in Riverbank, we, the Ministerial Association, has decided to have a National Day of Prayer rally at the New Life Church at 6443 Estelle Avenue in Riverbank. And the slogan this year is Wake Up America, and America needs to be wakened. Somebody needs to really wake up this nation that we live in, the nation that God has provided for us, and we, there we plan on having ministers, laypeople. We're inviting the City Council. We're inviting each one of you, the city manager, the city staff, any resident in the City of Riverbank. We're inviting them out to participate in this. This is something that's going to be great, you know? We are going to wake up Riverbank, and we are going to, you know, put Riverbank back on the map again as far as the good standings. And I'm not saying that it's bad, don't get me wrong. I'm just saying that, you know, for years now, we've kind of, we've just participated with other cities in these things, and now we're large enough, we feel that we're going to bring it here and participate, have Riverbank participate in this ourselves. We've invited the police department, the fire department, the schools. We're inviting everybody. We'd like to see that whole area just full of people praising God and waking up America. Thank you so much for your time, and please come out if you can.
Reverend Neal, do you have a time?
5:30 PM. We made it, you know, the county has theirs at noon, and we decided at 5:30 PM, then give people at work a chance to get home from work and then come down. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll move to item 3, Consent Calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are to be acted upon by a single action of the City Council LRA Board unless otherwise requested by an individual council authority member for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendations of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. Item 3A, Wave Readings. Item 3B, Approval of the April 12, 2016 City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Minutes. Item 3C, A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California Appropriating $10,100 from the General Fund Reserve for the repair of the block wall located at Proudy Way and Oakdale Road. Item 3D, Award Bid for the Slurry Seal Project 2016 and Authorized Execution of Future Change Orders. Item 3E, A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute and Submit Applications to the California Department of Resources Recycling and Recovery, CAL Recycle, for the Beverage Container Recycling Payment Program. And LRA Item 3F, A Resolution of the Local Redevelopment Authority of the City of Riverbank, California Amending the Existing Contract with San Joaquin Engineering Solutions, LLC, for Facility Management Services to Include Work on the Environmental Services Cooperative Agreement Number Two. Do I have any council members who would like to pull any of the items on the consent calendar?
I'd like to pull item 3C.
And I'd like to pull item 3D for further discussion.
Okay. Are there any members of the public who would like to pull any of the items on the consent calendar? Seeing none, we will pull item 3C and 3D. Do I have a motion on remaining items 3A, 3B, 3E, and LRA Item 3F?
I move that we pass the motions that you just stated.
I'll second the motion. Roll call.
Council Authority Members Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones-Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Tucker.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien. Sorry. Motion passes 4-0.
Okay. Item 3C, City Manager.
Yes. Thank you for actually bringing this item to the attention of the council. This is an item that came about as a result of a hit-and-run accident, and it is a block wall that is an entry to one of the city's subdivisions called North Landing, and we have been trying to do some research. You wouldn't think that repairing a block wall would create such a challenge, but it happens to be a very unique brick that only can be found in one, from one contractor, and in addition to that, we've had some difficulties determining who is actually liable for the wall. So at this point, we are concerned that there's no conclusive evidence that the city is responsible or that the homeowner is responsible. Generally speaking, it is not in the city right of way, so it would make the homeowner responsible, but we don't have anything that clearly documents that. It is probably built into the subdivision agreements that govern the property. So this issue has highlighted a need to clarify that the city's not responsible, probably through an ordinance change that is easily accessible and easily referable to these situations, which fortunately don't come up that often. However, we've also been getting some requests to actually get that wall fixed because it's an eyesore. And so at this time, we have been asked, we have asked the council for an appropriation from the general fund of $10,000. Our insurance doesn't cover it, and if it did, there's still $25,000 deductible for any type of infrastructure. The homeowner's insurance, it's unclear at this time. So there's a couple of options available to the council. If you're concerned about getting it done as quickly as possible, we could go ahead and appropriate the money, fix it, and then go after getting compensation through the homeowner's insurance after the fact. We could have a conditional approval of authorizing the money and actually having it confirmed 100% who's responsible, giving some opportunity for the homeowner's insurance company to confirm that contact has been made. So that would be conditional. So basically, you're giving us the authority to spend it conditioned upon clarification, or you can just hold off for two more weeks as well, and that is certainly an appropriate action to take if you'd like to hold off and have us come back. Michael Riddell, the Public Works Superintendent, who's been the lead on this project, is at a conference getting continuing education credits, so was, he was not able to work on that further. However, again, it has, it has raised an interesting question for the city to consider to clarify long-term. So it's really council's discretion. Any option is fine from a staff perspective.
I fully understand the need to get it done. I too think it's a huge eyesore, and I'd like to see it done as quickly as possible. But when we are writing a check for $10,000 that's coming out of the general fund, I hesitate just to freely write a check. So that's where my issues lie. I'm not trying to belabor the whole issue here, and I know there's been quite a, quite a bit of push to get this done, but I would really like to see that we have checked all possibilities as far as insurance goes with the homeowners. If it was a wood fence, and a hit-and-run had gone through the wood fence, it would have been a homeowner's issue. This would not have been this big of an issue. The homeowner would have made a claim on his homeowner's insurance, gotten the fence fixed. It's still his fence, even though it has a city sign on it. I still think that we need to do some stuff, and I don't feel comfortable writing a check and then asking insurance companies to, oh yeah, we'll pay for it, but then we want some money recouped. I would feel myself, and I'm only speaking for myself, to either put this off or get some more clarification as far as homeowner's insurance on their end. So that's where I kind of stand on that one.
Yeah, I just feel we need more information before we make a decision. That is an expense out of the general fund, and I just think we need more information.
What I'd like to see is, you mentioned that it may be in the subdivision ordinance, so we need to investigate that to see what it actually does say, and if we need to wait a couple of weeks to clarify that, and it does say that it is responsible of the homeowner, then we're not out that $10,000, or don't have to pay additional expenses in staff time or legal expenses to try to recover it. So I think we need to clarify what the ordinance is saying, see what that's all about.
I think I agree with what my fellow council members have stated, so.
So in response to that, shall we pull the item and bring it back when we can get 100% concurrence?
Yes. Very good. Thank you. Item 3D.
My questions regarding item 3D were the Slurry Seal Project. I wanted to know with us installing the new meter, the new meters, will the Slurry Seal Project have any interference with the installation, and what would be the timeframe for Slurry Seal Projects?
Those are very good questions. Actually, Kathleen Klick is the project manager for this, and she's taken the initiative to come and address those questions for the council and the public.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and members of the City Council. The water meter project will not interfere with the Slurry Seal Project. Most of the water meter replacements, they're walking. They park their vehicle and walk, and so we will coordinate with them if, when they're planning to slurry a street, we'll make sure that they're not putting in the meters on that. We can just switch them around. They're really going pretty quickly, and we've looked at a lot of the areas the Slurry Seals are going to be done on, and the water meters have already been replaced, so that is not an issue. But thank you for bringing up that question. Also, the project, once it starts, if it gets awarded tonight, the contractor has two weeks to bring in all his bonding and all of his paperwork. We'll have a preconstruction meeting, so they'll either start mid-May to the end of May, and it'll be 30 days, 30 working days. Thank you. You're welcome.
Is it safe to say by 4th of July?
Yes.
If approved tonight?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. I think the reason why I brought this question up was because I still have memories of us fixing Roseville, and then PG&E came in and tore it up, and then did not, you know, refix it or repave it so it looked as pretty as it did before they actually tore up the street to do their repairs. So that's still fresh in my mind and kind of hit me a little bit. So I just didn't want our Slurry Seal Projects to look the same way that, you know, Roseville did before, so.
I think that was particularly frustrating for everyone, and appreciate you bringing that up. For the public's edification, we'll let you know that PG&E was notified way in advance of the street project initiated by the City of Riverbank numerous times, and it was incredibly frustrating to us when we made such an effort to let them know way in advance it was happening that it came back there. So sometimes things happen, and yes, they do make a lasting memory.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to discuss item 3. D? Anybody in the public have an additional question on item 3D?
On the previous item, I think you, the council was wise. If we had gone ahead and approved the money, it would look like we had the fault. On this issue, PG&E people have come through with their little meter things and all that, and they've read ahead of those areas that are supposed to be overlaying, so I don't think we should have any problem with the PG&E. They have been out, they've out ahead and scouting the things, so, thank you.
Thank you. So do I have a motion on item 3D?
I'll make a motion that we accept item 3D.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Council Members Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones-Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker.
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Item 4.1, Unfinished Business. Second reading by title only and adoption of proposed ordinance number 2016-003 of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California amending the Riverbank Municipal Code by repealing in its entirety Section 153.217 Variants and Section 153.218 Appeals of Chapter 153 Zoning of Title 15. Land usage and substitute it with new Sections 153.217 and 153.218.
Mayor, members of the City Council, this item is a follow-up to the first reading and staff report that was given at the last meeting. Basically, this change to our code is to allow variances to be completed at the Planning Commission level rather than having to go through the extra step of coming to the City Council. It is a process that is consistent with many cities in the Central Valley, so it's not unusual to, for planning commissioners to have the authority to approve variances. So it is the recommendation from the staff to approve, to conduct the second reading and approve this ordinance.
Thank you. Is there anyone who wants to just have a discussion on this item? Anyone in the audience? Can I have a motion then, please?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the second reading as stated for item 6.1.
A second and approval, correct. Okay, roll call, please.
Council Members Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones-Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker.
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Five, Public Hearings. There are no items to consider this evening. Item 6, New Business. Item 6.1, A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California Establishing the City's Outdoor Water Use Policy.
Yes, so this evening, Mayor, members of the City Council, actually Vice Mayor, members of the City Council, as I mentioned earlier, Michael Riddell, the Public Works Superintendent, who has been handling our water issues, is at a conference, and so I am going to fill in for him tonight with the assistance of Annabelle Aguilar, who has done a lot of work on this policy, and particularly in regards to the appeal process and establishing the code. So I want to acknowledge her efforts on this and may use her for some backup as we go through this process. So with this, as the City Council is well aware, we have been struggling with meeting our conservation mandates, and fortunately, we're beginning to see some success. Our conservation rate last month was Our conservation rate last month was 36%, which exceeded the state mandate, but it was the first time that we had actually met or exceeded the conservation mandates from the state, so we're pleased. But we are pleased that we're beginning to see some progress and very thankful for the rain. So at this time, we are proposing changes to the outdoor water use policy to go into effect May 1st. This is a follow-up to sort of the experience we've had over the course of the last six to eight months in being able to provide some revisions based on the feedback from the community. So we're proposing a summer schedule that would be watering two days a week. The summer schedule would be April 1st through October 31st. So this year, because of the conservation order from the state of California that the city was faced with, we did actually have the summer scheduled to May 1st. However, we do believe in the future that it would be appropriate to start the summer schedule April 1st and have that be April 1st through October 31st. And there would be no landscape irrigation between 10:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. It's currently 9 to 9. It's particularly problematic in the winter. We figured for 10 to 7, give some people a few morning hours before it gets too warm, and then a few hours in the evening during those summertime months when the days get a lot longer. It would be odd-numbered addresses would be available to water on Wednesdays and Sundays before 10 and after 7:00. Wednesdays and Sundays are the dates that Trulock and Modesto have, so there would be some consistency throughout the county, and there is an effort to try and have consistency on the days. The watering hours are slightly different, but if we can at least get everybody on the same day, that would help for public information purposes. So we are proposing to give that 10 to 7:00. The even-numbered addresses would be available on Tuesdays and Saturdays. So again, if you had an even-numbered address, you could water Tuesdays and Saturdays between 10 and 7:00. And the good news is you would also be able to use your sprinklers again, which I know a lot of people have been waiting for. Landscape irrigation would be prohibited on all other times, Mondays, Thursdays, and Fridays. And landscape irrigation is prohibited within 48 hours after a rainfall event regardless of the permitted aforementioned summer watering schedule. This is part of the state executive order, so this is not a City of Riverbank requirement. This is a state requirement. And a rain event is an interesting way of defining it. Basically, if there's a puddle, Annabelle did some research on it. We did some quick Google searches just to one time to say, what is a rain event anyway? So I think that we're going to have to use our discretion there. If you've got some puddles, if your car is really wet, it's probably a rain event. And drip and microspray irrigation is exempt. So if somebody has a drip system, a small microspray, they've actually invested in some of the latest technology, and they would have the freedom to use that as needed. So this is exempt from the schedule. And that is consistent with other cities as well. The winter schedule would be November 1st through March 31st. There would be no landscape irrigation between 10:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. The odd-numbered addresses would be allowed to irrigate on Sunday, and the even-numbered addresses would be allowed to irrigate on Saturday. So we went with having a weekend day, so if people wanted to work in their yards, even during the fall and winter, do some work, that they would have the freedom to do that, and hoping that that will address some of the issues that have come up this last winter. Again, irrigation would be prohibited Monday through Friday during the winter, so it would only be allowed on the weekends. And again, it would be prohibited within 48 hours of a rainfall event, consistent with the state, and drip and microspray irrigation would again be exempt in the winter months. Consistent with the state directive, there would be no excessive water flow or runoff watering or irrigating any lawn, landscape, or other vegetated area in a manner that causes or allows excessive water flow or runoff into an adjoining street, alley, gutter, or ditch would be prohibited. Basically, the state has established that. We are reinforcing that, just to be very careful with when you're watering. And of course, as we all know and all want to do, there'd be an obligation to fix leaks, breaks, and malfunctions. That applies to the city as well. And we are trying to avoid any excessive use of water, loss of water through breaks. In fact, this is one of the areas that we're working on through the installation of the new water meter system that includes a leak detection system. And we certainly appreciate the public's help in identifying leaks or problems with broken public sprinklers, because that does happen, either through kids playing with them, they just break, they're very easily damaged. There is something about irrigation systems, they seem to be very sensitive. So if anybody sees a problem with a city facility, please let us know. If you see it with a school facility, to let the schools know, or we can not contact them as well. But it does happen, and we appreciate people bringing that to our attention. The help is definitely needed. Other water use. This generated a lot of discussion when we first discussed this a couple of weeks ago, and we're hoping that this policy addresses some of the concerns that have come up. And on any aspect of the water use plan and policy, we do actually ask for council feedback. We can make revisions to it as we go forward. So in the area of vehicle washing, vehicle washing is allowed. The washing of a commercial and non-commercial privately-owned vehicles is allowed with a handheld bucket, using quick rinses, and a hose with a quick-acting positive shut-off nozzle. So if somebody doesn't have a quick-acting positive shut-off nozzle right now, go out and get those before the spring months. Those things help save a ton of water. So that is something we are strongly encouraging and requiring through our water use plan. Vehicle washing would be limited to one washing per car per week, so you could keep your car clean. And if you wanted to, you could also probably do that on your lawn if it worked out for you. Just don't leave it parked there. The other thing is washing exterior surfaces. This created a lot of discussion and a lack of clarity in the past, and so we're hoping that by just putting it out there, I'm going to read the whole thing because I think that that will be important as we go forward, and that is that there should be no washing of building exteriors, mobile home exteriors, sidewalks, patios, driveways, gutters, or other exterior surfaces unless it is done for health and safety reasons, so to wash off animal waste, mold, et cetera, and done with the use of a quick-acting positive shut-off nozzle on the hose. So the washing of exterior surfaces, this is a reflection of the state order, so it's consistent with the state order, and we think gives some clarity to those situations that may not involve, for example, blood, but do have health and safety implications. And the state order does allow for health and safety use of water. The temporary waiver. So let's say you don't have something that's health and safety, but you need to do it. You want to paint your house, or you want to do a one-time clean above your house, or you're doing concrete or installing new drought-efficient landscape, and you need to use a little extra water. We are providing a way to get a temporary waiver, and we're hoping that eventually this will be able to be done online, and we'll have a couple of different avenues, either via phone, online, or make it quick and painless as possible. So essentially, the city could grant, or conditionally grant, a temporary waiver of the restrictions for existing potable water use that's otherwise prohibited. So that could be for health and safety, or it could be, again, that temporary waiver, which is more likely to be used for those outdoor activities that are non-continual, that just need a one-time use for, again, power washing, new concrete, new landscape, or some other use that makes perfect sense, but that we've not necessarily identified at the current time. The hardship exemption. This came up when we had some individuals come up that were disabled and only had assistance at different times of the day that didn't meet the watering code. And so we wanted to provide this exemption rather broad, but only to be given in certain circumstances. So this would be an exemption of the water use policy to be granted conditionally by the city manager or my designee due to the extenuating circumstances that would result in undue hardship. So what might that be? It could be a whole host of things. Again, what we're thinking of, what's come up over the course of the winter was really usually elderly individuals or disabled individuals that just were not able to, they didn't have the resources to be able to meet the code. So what we are asking for those, there'd be a processing fee for this. That is subject to the discretion of the council. We can do that or not do that, depending upon your direction. And again, this might be, this is broadly stated. I will say, though, that it may be broadly stated, but it will be, it will truly be given very carefully, because as you know, we are under a state order to conserve water, so it's not something that just anybody would get a hardship exemption. There would have to be documentation of a true hardship. Penalties. As you know, we did increase the penalties. The city did increase the penalties for the violations after the state provided its enforcement order or gave its enforcement order. So for those that might not have watched the City Council meeting or may not have read thoroughly, the City of Riverbank has been given a direct order, legal order from the state of California to reduce water use. And because of that, if we do not meet those mandates, we are subject to fines of up to $500 a day. And so it is a very serious situation that the city is facing, and it's based on the water use of our water customers, which is our businesses, our homes, our residences, as well as city use. And so it puts the city in a very difficult position that we need to clearly meet the state mandate. We all recognize we're in a drought, but we're also trying, you know, we want people to be keeping up their homes. We want them to not feel like they're being penalized for taking care of their lawns or their landscape. And so it's really, it's been a very difficult situation. But the fines did go up, and they went up from a policy of the first-time warning to a first violation of $100, second violation $200, third violation $300, and so forth. And there have been instances where those fines have gone to the third and fourth violation. So this is another thing that the council may want to reconsider. We can now change the penalties by resolution. We did have the City Council, there was an, excuse me, the City Code does have an appeal process that we did implement using the Planning Commission. That hearing was held for the first time last week. The Planning Commission, acting in its capacity as the Appeals Board, did hear appeals, and in some cases, they held up the fine, in other cases, they reduced it, in other cases, they dismissed it. So it was something of concern that came about in the discussion by the Appeals Board. So we do have, as always, whether it be, you know, in terms of fines, whether water, there's always the discretion to give a warning. There's also, we're also including in the policy an administrative, a clear provision that an administrative citation may be reduced to a formal written warning. We also are providing that the payment of fines, they would just be placed on the city's water bill and collected, consistent with the code. Again, back to the appeals. We needed to provide an opportunity for an appeal of any type of citation that's given, and so the Citation Appeal Hearing, to date, we've been using the appeals process established in the municipal code, which is that the Planning Commission acts as the Appeals Board, as I just mentioned. And we have established a time where they have to file within 15 days. To date, we have not charged a fee for filing an appeal, and that is something that is traditionally done by cities and other agencies as well. When somebody appeals it, there is a fee. We do have a fee when there's Planning Commission appeals. However, we do understand that that can be frustrating. And again, we're talking, this is a situation where the council, I really welcome the council's feedback on the non-refundable processing fee, whether you'd like it to be refundable if determined by the Appeals Board, whether you'd like to not have an appeals fee. It really is, really council direction would be welcomed. And we are recommending, though, that there be a timeframe and within 15 days for that. And we should probably establish that that would be 15 calendar days. Implementation. A lot of people have said that they are not necessarily aware of the work that's been done and the fines, the new fines, the new days. We have attempted to do education and outreach through direct mailings, both individual cards. We've done, there's been newspaper articles. We have taken out ads in a coupon book. We've done direct mailings in envelopes, again, as well as in individual cards, which I wanted to go with sample, but the one that was on the board didn't have that, and I don't want to take time to go through my file. But we've done a number of things to hopefully make it easy. What I've realized, based on my own experience as well as the feedback, that the best way to do it is in a four-color card that somebody doesn't have to open. We also are planning to go door-to-door with the new regulations once they're adopted, so we can kind of have that, make sure we're touching every door and being able to answer any questions when we're running across people in the streets. So we'll continue to do what we've been doing and try and make it as easy as possible for people to get the information. We understand people are busy. They get bombarded with mail, junk mail, and all sorts of things, so we'll try and cut through the clutter there that I think we all. And at this time, we'd welcome any questions or comments, suggestions for changes in the outdoor plan based on your own experience or the comments that you've been receiving from your constituents.
Sort of a ghost of Christmas past. Do we have questions, comments from council?
I have a couple of comments. I have two things that I would like to kind of throw out there. One of them is with the fees. And I know we've had a warning and then fees, and then we switched it to the first, no warning, and then the first one's $100, and then up. I would like to maybe compromise and have something in the middle. So the first offense, I would like to throw out there, to have the first offense being $35. I think $100 is just, it's a lot of money. And I happened to be down here when the lady was getting ready to fill out the appeals, and I understand that there's quite a bit of action going on at the front desk with appeals and fines that are coming in. And I think the message has been sent home. I don't think we need to go back to a warning, and as it said in here, there's always the opportunity to give a warning. But I would like the first violation to, I'd like to see it at $35 for the first violation, and then keep the rest, second violation, at $200. I just think that's reasonable. The other one I'd like to throw out there is I kind of have some issues with the appeals charge, and maybe a nice compromise might be to have the appeals charge at 25 to be refundable instead of non-refundable. Those are the two things that, after all the discussion that we had last time, those are the two things that I would just like to throw out there to maybe see if we can discuss that, those two things.
Well, I would like to see the refundable, say, may be refundable, not necessarily that it will be, but there's that possibility. And I would like to also see that the hardship processing fee, if it's truly a hardship, I don't think people will be able to actually pay that processing fee, so I would like to have that eliminated. And then, I'm not quite sure of the process for eliminating graffiti. Is there water involved in graffiti removal?
Sometimes I think that would be considered, at least, safety because it.
Okay, but we don't address graffiti. It's not even in our policy at all.
There are a number of things. That is actually a very good, very good point. In terms of, there are a few things that we did not address. They're not necessarily in the state order. They were purposely not addressed because it is, the number of possibilities that could come up are endless in terms of the use of water. So a lot of these would fall under what would be necessary for the health and safety. And if we are not, we don't remove graffiti, that just encourages more graffiti and not would be safe. So I would think that would consider that under normal things. But that is a very, a very good point. We would not want to leave, we would not want to put our community at risk in any way, and so that's where the balance needs to be, to be used.
I don't mind the reduction of the fee, but the fee's got to be painful enough so they won't do it again. So I'd go for $50 for the first fee, but I wouldn't go with 35. That's because this is going on for the second year, and we need to get the message across to our public that they've got to comply with the rules. And, you know, I think, I know it's money, but at the same time, the whole part of it is you're being punished for what you did because you're violating the codes, and we don't want them to violate the codes. So I could go for 50 for the first one. So I could go for 50 for the first one, but not 35.
Do we have any comments or questions from members of the public? Item 6.1.
Bob McRitchie, Riverbank. After putting up with these lovely ladies and gentlemen earlier, you're stuck with me, and I've got a bunch of stuff here. The first violation of 50 versus 35, I think that we've had so many changes of dates that I think the 35 would be appropriate. Because a lot of the people probably who will get the violation maybe would just not know what to do. And I think the 35 will catch their attention. 35, to me, is a lot of money to, you know, that I don't have to pay. Okay. The next one is the winter time. Again, we're talking about 7 o'clock, at 5:30, it's dark. The evaporant transpiration rate in the summer is about an inch a week, and the evaporant transpiration in the winter is about a tenth a week. So you could probably water all day long in the wintertime, and you would have no effect. So I would say that if you could back it up to maybe 4:00 in the afternoon, certainly the sun's close to down, there's not a lot of heat on the ground evaporating that water that you're putting there, plus people can then see what they're trying to do. So I would look at that. This thing of 9 to 9 is a real toughy, because again, here we are, and it's dark, and it's cold, and it's miserable, and the grass isn't transpiring, so, or the flowers under the eaves, or whatever you're doing. So look at that. I had one question on the water meter readings. Is every residence and business in town billed the same month? Or do we bill them on two different, all in the same month? Okay, thank you. Excuse me. I'm going to read some of this stuff because I wanted it to be somewhat organized. I've read the proposed ordinance and gone through it. I think it's pretty good. I don't think there's, in light of what the state's doing, that there can be too much of an objection, a few things here and there you may want to change, but in general, pretty good. However, there's a thing in your notes there that says, "The city will see a 32% reduction in water revenue if all water users meet the conservation things set by the board." The problem I have with this whole thing is, now, I love numbers, much to the dismay of Maricela and Debbie and the Housing Authority, because I'm on them, but what I did is I took all my meter readings every day for three months in the summer. And we went on the voluntary, two-day-a-week thing when others were on the four-day-a-week thing. So I had two days a week, and lo and behold, the city manager was correct, we used about 70% when we did landscape water. Landscape was 70% of our water use. So what I did is I took my two days, and I figured out our water use. Then I took two of the non-water days and inserted those water days into there, so it looked like it was four days. And by reducing from four to two, I saved 36% of my water. So we're trying to do 32% or something like that. A lot of my neighbors did the same thing. There wasn't water running down the street like there has been in the past. Some of the people who are widows and so on, I helped them set their stuff, and they didn't water in the daytime, and they did the right thing, and so on and so forth. So the thing that just bugs the heck out of me is that we were so far off the mark of the other cities. Now, the mayor told me, "Well, we have older pipes. Escalon has old pipes. Oakdale has old pipes. Modesto has old pipes." That's bony. The question I have, and Mike isn't here, do we measure our water use at the 12 wellheads? In other words, do we measure gross water? Whereas people with smartie meters just measure usage by businesses and homes. Because there's a big difference in that. Because if we're watering parks, and we're watering, you know, we have some construction that needs water, and so on and so forth, if you're only looking at metered water, that's a lot different than if you're looking at wellhead water. And when I look at the difference between ourself and the winner of up, I was corrected by the mayor from 50 to 40, but 40%, and the other guys are saving 30%, that's a 70% difference. And I can't believe that the city of Riverbank has enough water robbers and broken pipes that were that far off the mark. That's almost like, 70% is close to 100. It means we're just, it's horrible. So we have a little water district above us. They broke something. For three days, the water ran in torrents down the street. They fixed it. Two weeks later, two days, in a different spot, it broke, the same thing. All their lawns are beautiful, their flowers are gorgeous, they have summertime flowers, they water pretty much when they want to. I haven't heard one squeak from the feds, or the local papers, or the Modesto Bee, or anybody about these guys. And yet, we're just pounded on and pounded on, pounded on. So we do all this stuff, and then the state says, "Hey, you only reduced it by 6%. There's something wrong here." Because we don't have a bunch of scofflaws. Yeah, there's some, there's some everywhere. Some people don't know, some people don't understand, so on and so forth. But I paid the price for being proactive. My back lawn is gone, except for where the overhang of the roof is. And I ripped out my roses. I didn't plant any garden, any vegetable gardens. I'm a botanist, I love this stuff, and I'm looking at desert. So, you know, it's just not right. I don't want to have the state come and say, "You can't water at all," or "You can only water once in the summertime." I went with my son, he got hurt, and I was helping him over in the Bay Area. And I went through these places, he's a landscape guy, absolutely gorgeous places. I said, "Son, what's the skinny here? These things green and this, and all this stuff going on?" He says, "They don't care, they just pay the fine." And I said, "Okay, that's wonderful, but why is their water use so low in that city and in that area or that whatever?" Because these guys are all using water. And then here, we're all suffering, and we're saving. I don't have confidence right now of the fact that if we do all this stuff that you have here, that our results are going to be any different. If we can't find out where that water leak is going, we're just wasting time. We're going to have the state on us, and we're going to be, we're going to have to use toilet water to cook our food, because we're just not going to have it. So I think that the city really needs to look at how we measure water or where this waste is going. We can't be 20 and 30% behind every other city in this county and 70% behind in the wintertime. That's ridiculous. So I'm really upset about it, because I see the next step coming, and we're not going to have any water. And I'm, at that point, going to be on the violation list, because I'm not going to lose what little I have left. Thank you.
Michael's not here this evening to address Mr. McRitchie's comments. Is there anyone here who would like to, or be able to do that?
I'll give a general, some general comments. So appreciate Mr. McRitchie's frustration. We actually have shared some similar frustrations internally, as well as with the state water board, because it doesn't always make sense. Because we were in the process of implementing new financial software, as well as the new water meters that includes some leak detection on our large meters, we're hoping that that data will help solve the mystery of what's going on. We also recognize that sometimes the percentages sound large, but when you look at it in gallons per water use per day, per capita per day, it's not as big a gap. But we're based right now on what we did in 2013. We also are looking at what, you know, if just, and that was just sort of an arbitrary date and time. So when we look at our gallons of water use per day, it is not as far off as one might think. There are other cities that are meeting or exceeding their mandates, but they're using more water per day than we are. So if push comes to shove, that's going to be some of that data that we have to go through with the state to look at. I will tell you, though, they have been very, very reasonable and very cooperative in terms of making it very clear that they can implement fines at any point in this process, but understanding that the city of Riverbank has been doing everything possible to meet the mandate through our very active public information campaign. We've had four-color mailers go out almost every single month, as I mentioned earlier. And the investment that the city council has made, the strategic one-time investments in the new financial software and doing the water meter project, should give us that data, so as we go into the middle of summer, we should have a better handle on it. So I appreciate Mr. McRitchie's frustrations for that. And in terms of the hours of watering allowed, I do think that, one of the things we've been trying to do is keep it consistent throughout the year, but maybe it makes sense to have different hours allowed in the summer and in the winter, and not try to come to a compromise. Certainly open to what the council thinks would be best for the community, and if you'd like to see those watering hours revised for the winter month to make it, you know, allow more watering during the day, that's absolutely, that's certainly fine. We're going to put something out there based on trying to keep some things consistent, but maybe that's not the best solution.
Back to council, any additional comments?
I've got a question. If the data that Mr. McRitchie gave us about the wintertime, it really isn't that much of an evaporation rate, we might consider revising the time back to 5:00 or 4:00 o'clock, just because if what he says is correct, it would actually be safer for the public to be watering when there's more daylight in the wintertime than even, you know, when there's not. So that would be something I would say we should consider, based on the figures he gave.
But like 10 to 4, or?
10 to 5, something of that nature, based on what he said.
I'm in agreement with having winter hours in line with that.
I am as well. I think the 10 to 4, or 10 to 5, whatever we can come to an agreement on. I'm also in agreement with lowering the first violation fine to 35.
I have a question. With our new construction and our new residents and new homes and so forth, do we really need, how will that affect our water usage? Do we, is the state going to look at, maybe we should make some adjustments, or do we need to make some kind of adjustments? I'm just curious as to, do we need to do anything?
And actually, that's a very good point. And we actually have applied to get a population increase based on the new development that's come in, as the council's aware, there's been a lot of new residents in the new homes at Cornerstone and Crossroads. So that has been reflected in our numbers of late, and we'll continue to do that as we see more development in the city, which is certainly coming, particularly near the high school area. So we'll continue to update our figures based on new development. There's a process that you go through to get that allowance.
I believe there are restrictions on new residential development regarding landscaping. I can't recite what those are, but I think those are included within the executive order.
Okay, but water usage is what I'm concerned about.
They do things like prohibit certain things that kind of de facto cut down on the water use from the start.
But our numbers won't change. Our reduction of 32% is not going to change.
Well, actually, the state did actually reduce it to 30% based on our warm weather, particularly in the summertime months. So our reduction actually has gone down to 30% as we go into the summer months, but it is, you know, with the challenge that we've been having, we'll take it, we'll take it. I'll just go that, we'll take it. And the city attorney is correct that the, we do have an ordinance establishing drought-tolerant landscaping requirements, also to new construction has low-flow, you know, toilets, showerheads, et cetera, as well. It is one of the things on the list of legal projects to consider is to update our zoning code, and as part of that, we would anticipate that we would further enhance the sections on requiring low-flow water devices in new construction, or any significant remodels.
I have another question also, and maybe you can answer this, maybe not Jill, but in regards to time put in with our water police officer that's taking, going around, deciding and whatnot, and other data that has to be handled with the infractions, is the water department able to, out of their budget, handle this? Or are we having to dig into our pockets other places, you know, because of this? I know we, at the beginning, hired the water policeman as a temporary position, but now, because of what's going on with the state, it's turning into a permanent position, and I think we need to look at the cost factors involved with that and this whole process.
Councilmember Campbell, yes, it has been, it's been a very onerous task, I will say, and there's been a lot of effort put forward throughout the city. As I mentioned, Annabelle Aguilar, our city clerk, has, has put a lot of time and energy into it. The appeals process is intense in terms of the amount of paperwork that needs to be generated to make sure we're communicating via email, via letter, follow-up letters in terms of what the decision has been, establishing and clarifying the documents related to the appeal process. It is, so it has been, it has been a significant amount of work that we do, do expect that we're going to need to probably fund the position of water coordinator as a full-time position, consistent with the state order, in the next fiscal year. We do have a part-time water coordinator on staff as well, and there may be some additional clerical assistance, that a portion of which might be charged to water to be able to deal with the appeals process.
And can our water budgets sustain this increase?
Believe that it, well, at this point, we really have no choice. So we'll be looking at that in further detail on May 23rd, when we go through the budgets. It is, it is a, it is a concern, as always.
Thank you.
Are we ready to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and accept this, some of the changes in there. Do I need to list each one of the changes?
You could, yes.
With, with the first violation being $35, and then having a refundable appeals fee, let's see if I can remember the other one, taking out the waiver, or the fee for-
Hardship.
Hardship, thank you. Amending the winter hours to 5:30, that's what I wrote down. And-
5:30 or 10 to 4, because it's currently-
Okay, let's do 10 to 4. I'll just pick a number, there we go, 10 to 4.
Prohibited between 10 and 4.
Okay, 1, 2, 3, 4 things, I had 4 things.
Just to clarify, the appeals charge is refundable if it's dismissed, or?
I think we just said may, maybe.
Right, it's maybe.
Maybe.
Right.
If it's, okay.
Yeah, yeah. I just wanted to take non-refundable out of there, so if we can change it to-
Leave it open, so that-
Maybe refundable.
That's what I had heard, but I wanted to make sure that's part of your motion, too.
Yeah, that's part of it.
Okay, all right.
So I had 4 changes.
And with all of those revisions, I second the motion.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker.
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Good job.
Council, thank you very much. This is, you know, this has been challenging for everyone, our residents, all of you, and I certainly appreciate everyone's patience, particularly the public, as we've worked through this issue. And hopefully, these changes will make it a lot, a lot clearer and easier for everyone as we go into the summer months.
Thank you, Jill. And I think that, you know, the council recognizes that it's been difficult for staff to implement and certainly to handle all the various aspects of this, including the appeals process. And I think some of the things that we're looking at, including the online temporary waiver, things like that, in an effort to make this whole process more user-friendly, more palatable to the public, is certainly worthwhile. So thank you for that as well.
And I'd like to add one last comment, too. I'd like to thank Michael Riddell and the Water Department for working so hard at listening to what we said a few meetings ago, and coming up with the ideas to help this become a better policy for our community.
And I'd like to thank those that were involved in that first appeals process. I know it was difficult, but we thank you for your efforts.
Ditto. Item 6.2, Resolut- Item 6.2, resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California implementing a utility rate assistance program, URAP, for water and sewer rates for low-income senior and low-income permanently disabled residents.
Vice Mayor, members of the City Council, Maricela Garcia, Director of Finance will be providing an overview of the proposed utility rate assistance program.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and members of the City Council. Tonight, we do have for you the details of the utility rate assistance program that is being proposed for implementation. This was being proposed as a result of the strategic plan objective that was established under enhancing professionalism and customer service. So in an effort to provide some rate relief to a section of our population that is on a fixed income, we've developed this program for our low-income seniors, which are considered 65 or older, and then our low-income permanently disabled residents. Just to give an overview, some of the other utility rate assistance programs that we reviewed as we were putting ours together is that the majority were geared towards low-income. A lot of them used income guidelines that were established by PG&E, federal poverty levels, or they were individually set by the agency. They all required some type of income verification. And then they did have a recertification or reapplication process that needed to happen. Some of them were annually, some of them were biannually. The discounts ranged from a flat dollar amount discount to percentage off discounts. And a couple of the local programs that I was able to find is that the City of Ceres offers a utility users tax exemption on their electric, gas, cable, and telephone for low-income residents. The City of Modesto refers their customers to a CVOC assistance program, which the City of Riverbank has also been doing because we were also able to take advantage of that program. And the City of Escalon does have a sewer rate discount for their low-income residents of $4.18. And so our proposed program, which we're lovingly calling the URAP, the criteria that we've established for this program is that it would be eligible to seniors aged 65 or older or permanently disabled residents. The applicant must be the current account holder on the water or sewer account. The applicant must be considered extremely low-income. And so this would be based on the Stanislaus County and California HCD income limits that are established annually. The current limits that are, are in effect now is that the annual income for one, a one-person residence is $11,950. For two people, it's $13,650. And for each additional household member, it's an additional $1,700. It would be available to residential customers only, so those with commercial accounts or with landscape-only accounts would not be eligible for this program. The home must have an individual water meter. The applicant must live at the address where the discount is being received, so this will avoid any potential landlords who may have multiple residents and who would technically, you know, not be considered low-income because they're subsidizing their income with the rental fees that they're obtaining. We would require proof of residence and proof of income in order for the qualification to be made. The applicant would recertify or reapply every 2 years just to ease the administrative burden on the finance department and also to, to give some consistency to the resident that they wouldn't have to worry about their fees increasing for another 2 years. The program will be funded via the fines, forfeitures, and penalty revenues that are currently charged via the 10% delinquency penalty whenever a resident pays their, their water bill late. The reason that we're able to do this is because these fees are not associated to the rates that were set by the City Council. Proposition 218 strictly prohibits a city from being able to use our rate revenue for a program such as this. And so if we dedicate the fines, fees, and penalties towards this program, that type of revenue would be eligible for, for funding. The program will be on a first-come, first-served basis, depending upon the funding that's available. We would accept new applications once a year in June for the discount to be effective as of July 1st. The City Council would appropriate the funds on an annual basis during the budget preparation. And so we are proposing a flat dollar discount for water and sewer, and that would just help, once again, with the administrative burden and for consistency purposes, that we would be able to explain to every resident that they would be obtaining the same discount as their neighbor would be if they, they happened to be in the same situation. So for water, we are proposing a monthly discount of 19, of $9. For sewer, it's a monthly discount of $6, so that would be a total monthly discount of $15. Now, we do send our bills bimonthly, so they would note a $30 decrease in their bimonthly bill. And so they would have total annual savings of $180 throughout the year. Just to kind of highlight what a discounted billing might look like, so currently, a low-income resident most likely already takes advantage of our senior rate. And we also have that available to our permanently disabled residents. So they're, they're paying an average of $112.96 with the discount of $30. That would decrease to $82.96 every 2 months. So the potential budgetary impact, and you'll also see these figures as we're discussing the annual budget that's proposed for the 2016-17 fiscal year, is that we currently have available in the water fund approximately $39,000 in these fines that we've received. In the sewer fund, we've received $25,000. And so that's a total of $64,000 available towards this program. Something that I do have to highlight is that the water and sewer fund will no longer be able to depend on these funds in order to fund its operations. But that's okay because the intent of the increase in our water and sewer rates was so that we wouldn't have to depend on other funding sources in order to, to continue our And so tonight, our recommendation is that you consider adopting a resolution which would implement the utility rate assistance program, or URAP, for our water and sewer rates, which would allow our low-income seniors and low-income permanently disabled residents to apply.
Thank you, Maricela.
The, the plan is to, if it's adopted tonight by the City Council, that we would market the program during the month of May as heavily as we can, and then begin taking applications as of June 1st on a first-come, first-served basis.
Great. And as you mentioned, this is a, it was established as a goal at our strategic planning session, so it's something that we've all indicated a commitment to, I believe.
Yes.
Questions, comments, council?
Really great. Thank you for your hard work.
Agreed.
Agreed.
All right. Questions from the, and comments from the audience? Mr. McRitchie?
I was wondering if we have any census data or anything that would indicate how many low-income seniors and those people would take advantage of this program? If we have 65 grand in the kitty, will it be 100,000 or will it be 20,000? Do we have any idea of what the take would be on that?
Albert?
I have one comment. I wish you would quit calling it low-income because it's straight on here, it's extremely low-income only. When you started this thing, when you jacked up our rates on the water and sewer, you promised the people a program for low-income seniors and disabled. That's what, that's, when you went through the Prop 218 and everything, it was for low-income, which you came out with was one for, with a 30% limit, which is extremely low-income. You're leaving out a lot of people, seniors and disabled out there that need this program that won't qualify. And that's not what you promised. Don't call it low-income when it's extremely low-income.
I'd like, I'll, I'll address Evelyn's initially, and that is, if the Proposition 218 process does not allow the use of the rates to be used for any kind of discount, regardless of how valuable or worthy it might be. As a result of that, as Maricela has, has communicated, is that it, it must come from other resources, such as the fines and penalties. Either that, or it needs to be a general fund appropriation. And in light of the condition of our general fund, to, we just, we candidly can't afford it. If, as we go forward and the council believes that it's worthy to take general fund revenues and to apply it to a discount program related to the water, that, that's something that, that is at your discretion to do. The reality is, though, as I think all of you have acknowledged, is that that means some other program is not going to happen. That the, the, the general fund revenue is not growing as fast as expenses are, expenses related to, you know, whether it be minimum wage, increase in cost of materials, increases in staff costs, it just, it is, it is some of those things that, that's going up. So as painful as it is to say that this is all we can afford at this point. In terms of the numbers of people, that, I believe it, the estimates are being used based on the number of people participating in the waste collection discount, and I don't have that number off the top of my head, but I'm pretty sure Maricela does. So if Maricela would like to address that, that would be, be great.
So currently, we have 225 customers that are enrolled in our senior rate discount for our garbage service. So the, the impact we would be having there with those residents who would be able to apply for this program is about $23,000.
Any additional comments or questions from the council based on that information? Okay, do I have a motion?
I move that we accept item 6.2.
I'll second it.
Councilmembers Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker.
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Item 6.3, receive presentation regarding the proposed expenditure plan adopted by the Stanislaw Council of Governments, STANCOG, Board of Directors, and review the City of Riverbank's expenditure plan project list.
Vice Mayor, members of the City Council, as you know, there's discussion at the regional level regarding putting a ballot measure before the voters in November this year to determine whether or not the city, the county of Stanislaw should become a self-help community by having a special dedicated sales tax for transportation purposes. So as they prepare to seriously consider that, they have asked the cities to come up with a project list that might be funded by such a proposition. And so tonight, what we're doing is just providing you an overview of the projects that we would be proposing for inclusion. This is an informational item tonight. We do expect coming back to you in May, asking for, most likely, a formal resolution indicating your support or lack thereof, and if it is, if it is improved, what projects would be funded with the funds. The polling to date has indicated that residents overwhelmingly throughout the county want to see their local roads fixed more than anything else, and that that is the type of proposition that they could support and get behind. And so what you will see before you this evening is an overview of the vast majority of any funds raised through self-help sales tax would be used for local projects. Kathleen Gleek has been our point person for this, and she is going to provide an overview of the proposed expenditure project list.
Thank you, Jill. Good evening again, Vice Mayor and members of the council. So tonight, what I'm going to do is go over the City of Riverbank proposed 25-year expenditure plan project list. So the, like I said, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to give you a brief overview of the proposed expenditure plan. The executive director, Rosa Parks, was here in February, kind of gave an overview, just go over some of the, the high points for you, and also to share the city's proposed 25-year expenditure plan project list. It's a proposed list. Staff sat down, went through our capital improvement plan, went through our pavement management plan, and this is the list that, that we have come up with. We, tonight, I'd like, you know, any comments or questions you have on the projects. There's also, on this list, there'll be, you might see projects that aren't on there that you think should be on there, and those are projects that most likely we already have funding for, so they're not listed. But I have been told that those projects will be highlighted to the public once STANCOG goes through the process, so that the public will know that we do, various cities have funding for some of their high-profile projects, and maybe that's why they're not on the list. So STANCOG Policy Board is proposing a half-cent sales tax measure for the 2016 November ballot. The sales tax will fund local and regional transportation projects and programs. One of the steps in the process is for the city to develop a 25-year project list, and this has been asked of each of the jurisdictions in Stanislaus County. So the list was developed from the city's capital improvement plan and pavement management plan. The project list represented tonight is for informational purposes. STANCOG will return to the City Council in May, seeking a resolution of support for the financial expenditure plan, and at that time, the final detailed list of projects will be also with that and ask for your approval. So the proposed expenditure plan, local streets and roads, want 50% of the funds to be spent on local streets and roads. Like the city manager has stated earlier, overwhelmingly, that's what the residents want, and so that is what we're looking at here. Funds will be used exclusively for maintenance, so no new roads can be used with this, with this money. It's strictly just for maintenance. So the city is projected to receive a little over $656,000 annually to fund these projects. So this is a little hard to read. It's easier for the public, theirs, and then I also gave a separate one to each of you. It's a little bit larger, so you could read it. What we did is we went through the local streets and roads, pavement management plan, and put our top roads, a lot of these are collectors and arterials that are travel, heavily traveled. And then every 5 or 6 years, we've put money aside for various local road maintenance. So that would be for slurry seals that maybe don't need an overlay or reconstruct, but we can just go ahead and do a big, a large slurry seal project like we're doing now, which we can hit a lot of roads at that time. But these are the roads that came up in our pavement management plan where they needed a little extra work. And so we've kind of put them out there with dollar figures and then the years that we would plan on doing those roads. Here's another list, so it's 2 pages here, so quite a few roads over the years. And then the next is a proposed expenditure plan for traffic management. These projects can include upgrades to local intersections, signalization, and our traffic calming methods. The city is projected to receive a little over $131,000 annually to fund these types of projects. So we also have a proposed expenditure plan for bicycle and pedestrian. Projects include local connectivity, local schools, trails, and recreation facilities. The city is projected- The city is projected to receive a little over $65,000 annually to fund these projects. So here, we have our traffic management, and we've talked about Rozelle Avenue at Morel. We do have funds for that project. I put in for year one and two, in case we needed additional funds, but that project is funded through CMAC. Also, we were looking at Claws Road and California Avenue, install intersection and pedestrian improvements, and then intersection improvements at 108 and Claws, and that would be, and also with 108 and First, and that would be a joint project with Caltrans.
Would it also be, I'll just go ahead and also add that the city is working in partnership with the county for the Signal at Clarabelle and Rozelle. That project is ongoing. Kathleen may have an update on where that's at, but that is an ongoing project as well. So while it's not represented on the list, it is an ongoing project.
Not in here?
It is not in there.
Okay.
And it's not in there because it's completely funded, and it's a county project. We have no control over the project, other than stating that we wanted to have a signal there. So it's, we receive 30%, the plans are 30% complete, and they're still working on environmental. So I'm, we're looking at probably 2017, late 2017, early 2018, before that's constructed. And we also, the Signal at Patterson and Rozelle is not on here, and that is because we're already in the process with our preliminary engineering and environmental, working with BNSF, and that is fully funded and on schedule. So the bicycle and pedestrian, we have, what I listed here was Patterson Road on the north side from First to Claws, and then we have a pedestrian trail, Rozelle Avenue, between, from Crawford to Clarabelle, which would get the students to Enoch's. And both of those projects, I'm applying for active transportation, and I won't know that till the summer, so I added those to this. If we are lucky and get that money for active transportation, then we'd be able to move other projects up and not use this funding for those projects. So the proposed timeline, March to May is education programs and finalize the project list. June is to present the final project list to the board and present final ballot language. July, request to the Board of Supervisors to place the measure on the November ballot. And August and November is the activities as far as getting outreach and getting political advocate committees helping to get it passed.
So from a city perspective, cities are allowed to provide information. We cannot provide, we cannot advocate one way or the other. As individual council members, on your own time, you can choose to support or oppose any type of measure that you'd like, but from the city, our role would just be to provide information. Just to clarify for members of the public who may be wondering, there would be no city money going towards advocacy, it would just be information.
Oh. Any feedback or comments or questions?
First, you were at the STANCOG meeting the other day.
Yes.
Correct my memory. When we looked at the data, by the way, I think the way her data is laid out year by year is much better than the chart we looked at at STANCOG the other night. It makes a lot more sense, because theirs was confusing, because it jumped all over the board with just dates, but not any consistent order with how things were going to be done. But just clarify for me, because I don't quite remember, we had quite a discussion there, and did they decide they were going to revise some of these, what the cities were doing, or were they going to leave it as is?
They're still refining that. So we'll actually, any feedback that you have now, or after having the chance to review the list more carefully, we can incorporate that into the next presentation, which will most likely happen in May, the first or second meeting in May, that can be reflected in the final list that would actually go before the voters.
And another question I have, I see that like you've got Candlewood and Woodhaven on here, and on Estelle Avenue, but, so when they do Estelle Avenue, will they do some of the other streets that attach to Estelle Avenue, like Rio Verde or Rivercliff Drive, streets like that?
Depending on what the classification list on the PCI, it may fall under one of the slurry seal projects. So when we do the various streets, and then we do the, you know, the 80 streets for the $600,000, then it may fall under one of those.
I have a selfish interest in this, you know, because I live right over the office of Estelle, and once upon a time, we didn't get very much traffic.
Yeah.
But now, where I live, because of the charter school there, and most of the students come inside, every day, and between certain hours, we're getting a couple hundred cars up and down our street, because they go around it, and because of that, there's a lot more wear and tear on it.
Okay.
And if they're going to do something on Estelle in year 24, I'm kind of concerned. I think that street's going to wear out before then.
Yeah. So, and that's the input that we need. Like I said, we have the pavement management plan that we're going off of. Usually, once we compile a list, we'll actually, especially for the slurry seals, we'll go out and look at those streets, because there's a lot of maintenance right now. The public works, staff is out there at, on all those 80 streets, putting the, you know, making sure that the weeds are cleaned up and doing a lot of crack seal preparation and getting those streets ready for us. So they are looked at, we do walk them, and make sure that they are classified correctly, instead of just looking at the report and completing it. But any feedback, residents have any feedback, or any questions, or projects that they see that aren't on there, that should be on there, and then, of course, staff can go back and look and reassess some of those areas.
And correct me if I'm wrong, we can't just go by when was the date that the, you know, the last time that the street was repaired, right?
Right.
You have, because every street has a different volume of traffic.
Right.
And different wear and, you know, wear rate, if you will, so.
Right. That is true.
But there is an organization to this process.
Yes, there is.
Very much prioritized.
We try, yes.
That's what I wanted to assure everyone.
A lot of streets, but, you know, we're trying to make sure we get all of them. But like I said, the public, and of course, council, if, you know, you see something out there, a street, that you think needs to be done and not on the list, please let us know, and we can assess that and, you know, make adjustments to that list.
Good. One of the benefits that is available to those counties that do have a sales tax dedicated for transportation purposes is it makes them eligible for more funds, because that self-help, as they call it, a self-help designation, that is honored and given extra points by the state and the federal governments for different projects and different pots of money. So that is another reason to be able to, another reason why this could provide a lot of benefit to the community. I also like to acknowledge that Kathleen works on a lot of other grant applications, closely with STANCOG and other agencies, as available to get alternative funding for our streets and roads that we clearly need.
And Jill, if I may, the self-help counties, if we become one, we have the chance of getting an incredible amount more of funding that build upon what we're paying tax-wise and make it three or four times what we're getting from the federal and the state government. Is that correct?
Yes.
But also, some of that funding will have to go to the highways, too, right?
Oh, yeah, but it'll be for roads and funding in our area.
Right, but I'm just saying, for our area, but also you got to look at what's being done, what should be done for State Route 99, and some of, like 108 and so forth, some of the roadways, not just here in the city, but some of that funding has to go to some of us.
Yeah, it's regional funding, but it would be maybe three or four times if we get this tax what we're getting now, and it would be divided up, like you say, to regional projects.
Exactly.
Highways, and the cities, too.
Exactly, right.
But the point is, we'd be getting a lot more funding to do it with.
Mm-hmm. Any comments or questions from the public?
Your page on your intersections. Install traffic signal, 108 and First Street. They already have a traffic signal there. Can you clarify why we're going to do it again?
At 108 and First Street, the issue there is, and you are right, Evelyn, there is a signal there already, but it's, for the amount of traffic that that intersection gets with the trucks, we had a fatality there, a truck turning and actually hit someone. It's a big project. It would involve a lot of right-of-way, but to make that so that there was actually a turn, and so it's something that has been on the radar, that we've been looking at. It's just with the amount of traffic that goes over that bridge, and especially if McHenry Bridge is closed, or any other access, everybody has to travel over that bridge to get from one side of the river to the other. So anyway, that's, and it's also a concern of Caltrans, so.
So this isn't actually installing a traffic signal, this is actually widening the road. So when do the people on First Street, which road you're going to widen, get notice, and how is this going to affect us?
Ms. Halbert brings up a good question. This is a proposed sales tax that is actually, is any, may or may not pass. Any type of specific project that's on this list is, unless it's noticed in year one, is probably years and years away, and that if and when the city undertakes any major changes to First Street or any other street, or the residents impacted, would be notified. So that is, one of the things that can be challenging is that when we talk about these projects, we talk about them for a very long time, because the process is very long, between the initial concept design and getting approval for that, to going, to finding some possible funding sources, to do the engineering and design documents, and the environmental impact reports, which usually take multiple years, and then you go to construction design, and then you actually go to right-of-way acquisition, and then you go to construction, that it takes a very long time. And so it can be probably frustrating and challenging and confusing when you start talking about a project and think, well, why haven't I been notified? Because the reality is, the project is not a done deal until it's a done deal, and they take multiple years, if not decades, to get done. And so it's just the process that we go through, the public process, that is needed for any project of significance. So do appreciate Ms. Halbert's questions.
I had one thing just for that, too. Since Caltrans would be involved in that particular intersection, we are also at the mercy, before we can do this project, of them. They'll, if they're not ready to go on it, even if we had the money, we can't do it. So we have to deal with them, and until they're ready to do it, there won't be any warning about what's happening.
Please approach the lectern if you're going to speak. Thank you. Anything else on that before? Okay. So we have received the presentation. Is that all you need from us this evening?
Yes, it is.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, item seven, comments. 7.1, staff comments.
Yes, I'd like Sue Fitzpatrick to start out this evening.
Vice Mayor and Members of the Council, just a reminder, this Saturday, we will have the color run out at Jacob Myers Park. It'll start at 8:30, and we have 88 people signed up, which is nice, and I think people can still sign up if they just decide to come out, you just need to bring their own white t-shirt. And then right after that, we'll go into Riverfest, and that will be from 9 to 3:00. And we have train rides, and Spec Ops will be out there with their marshmallow bow-and- arrow course, and music, food, so it'll be, it'll be a fun day, and hopefully the weather will hold steady this time, because I think that's the key, so. Other than that, we do have one more dog park task force meeting coming up on May 7th. What we're trying to do is just establish if there is enough desire in the community to move forward with trying to get a dog park here in Riverbank. So we're going to try meeting on a Saturday. We're still looking at about three different sites. We have to kind of go through that pro and con, which we'll come back to council with a little bit more information when we see that there is the need. Other than that, one more thing I wanted to tell you, because I'm kind of excited about it, is we've been trying to get a soccer league in Riverbank for, ever since we developed the sports complex, and the most we could ever get was 80 kids, and there was never enough for the, all the different age groups. We've been struggling with that, but this time, we had the strategy of hiring someone who was well-connected with the soccer community, and Saturday, we had 162 kids come out. The line was all the way across the parking lot at the sports complex. So we've crossed that barrier, and it's great, everybody's excited, and you'll see people out there on the sports complex playing soccer.
Wonderful.
Yeah, that's a good thing. So that's all I have.
Can you give me the dates and times of that May meeting? It wasn't in my calendar.
May 7th at 10:00 a.m., and it'll be here at City Hall. Okay.
And also, I'd like to announce that the city, in partnership with the Alliance, will be hosting a workshop, How to Run a Home-Based Business, so we're encouraging everybody to come out. That is on Thursday, May 5th, from 6:00 to 8:00. So as Reverend Neil mentioned, there's going to be an event at 5:30, so many people can go to that event and then come here. But again, the How to Run a Home-Based Business, that workshop will be from 6 to 8 on Thursday, May 5th, in the East Council Chamber, so you can tell this is a very well-used building. In addition to that, I would like just to thank everybody who came out for Love Riverbank. We also had, on that same day, Friends of Jacob Myers Park was hosting a yard sale for the Del Rio, selling a lot of chairs and a lot of tables, many of which went to Council Member Jones Cruz for her new business. So she alone made the day profitable for the Friends of Jacob Myers Park, but that was a great benefit to the city to have them sell that, and that money going back into our beautiful park. And then you had Love Riverbank going on, and that was just a great, it was great to see so many people come out. And then on behalf of the staff, would like to thank those that brought us cookies, including Central Valley Resources, headed up by our own Council Member Barbara Martinez. We had a dentist office drop them off. It was just, it was just really fun, and just wanted to thank everybody for actually thinking of city staff as well, as well as the more, the more obvious choices, such as police and fire. So thank you on behalf of the staff and for everybody for loving Riverbank.
7.2, Council Authority Member comments. Council Member Jones Cruz?
Most of mine have been taken already on here. The only other thing I had on here is that Council Member Barbara Martinez and I are headed to Sacramento tomorrow for Legislative Action Day, so if there's anything that you guys would like us to pass on to our council or Congress and Assembly members, please text us or email us. We'll be heading out bright and early tomorrow, we'll be spending the day in the Capitol. So that's all I have.
Council Member Campbell?
I'd like to invite council members, city staff, to come down to Jacob Myers Park for the color run, and help us thoroughly powder all over them. It's a blast. If you're going to get rid of some anxieties, it's a good way to do it. I did it last year, and it's a real kick.
Council Member Barbara Martinez?
I, too, would like to thank all of the volunteers that participated in Love Riverbank. They made cookies for our public service departments, cleaned alleys, beautified Jacob Myers Park, cleaned library shelves, and helped our senior citizens with special projects. And I just feel that Love Riverbank should be a day that we consciously participate in some way or another every day of the year, instead of just one day a year. The month of May is dedicated to raising awareness about issues facing older adults and highlighting the way that older Americans are advocating for themselves, their peers, and communities. There will be a short presentation Friday, May 6, on elder abuse prevention at the Community Center from 10 to 12. And I'd like to thank Chief Riley- And I'd like to thank Chief Riley for also helping us with that. Chief Kylie, not Riley, Kylie. And then I'm looking forward to see everyone also at Riverfest on Saturday, April 30th, after the color run. Thank you.
Everybody stole my thunder, so I don't really have anything else. With that, let's see, I guess we will go into closed session. Public will have five minutes to comment on closed session items as set forth on the agenda prior to the City Council LRA Board recessing into closed session. Item 8.1, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9, subsection A, name of case, City of Riverbank versus Riverbank Oil Transfer LLC, Stanislaus Superior Court Case Number 2012779. And with that, we will adjourn to closed session.
...